This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, et cetera, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board. Councilmember Pataglia?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Councilmember Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Greenman?
Here.
Mayor LaBrus?
Here.
Everybody please rise for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, approval of the minutes, January 26, 2015.
I'm sorry?
Approval of the minutes, January 26, 2015, council of the whole, end of 27, 2015, regular meetings, which were rescheduled and held on February 12, 2015. Have a motion, please, to accept the minutes?
Offered.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Okay, city managers, report, please.
I'm going to rearrange this. I'm going to start off with number three, which is now number one, grant application update, Millennium Strategies. We've submitted a grant to fund officer overtime costs through the distracted drivers grant. We're currently working on a Lowe's grant, community partner grant. I talked to the, about the NJTPA grant that was submitted and we got already moving along with that. We're looking at a highway safety grant, NJDEP hazardous discharge site remediation fund grant, and two FEMA grants. Included in your packet, there's also a summary of 2014, I believe it was over $300,000 in grants that were received with the assistance of Millennium Strategies. Number two, the current summer schedule series, since I had not all the correct information at the last meeting, I figured I would do it again. July 4th is the infernos, July 14th is the depris, July 21st is smooth, July 28th is the time machine, and August 4th is the filet of soul.
Okay.
Next, I'm going to move over to that, and if we could just turn on that slide projector or the, we're going to go through a review of 2014, and then we'll go right into a presentation for you on the 2015 budget.
Oh, it's in here. There it is. You know, he was doing this. That didn't do it. Oh, I can burn through this. Just give me a second. How do I get this to? Oh, there it is. Here. Should we kill some lights? You guys want the lights on? Can everybody see from out there or do you need some lights off?
You're good.
You're right?
Fine.
Isn't that snazzy? Okay, redevelopment updates, development projects, 94 State Street, project is projected to be completed in June of 2015. We have demolition started on 150-170 Main Street, we have approvals, approvals for 210 and 214 Main Street, we have approvals on 210 Moore Street. The Atlantic Street construction is started and will be completed by Memorial Day this year. We have the Atlantic Street parking project, we have city-owned Lot C, submission of tidelands application, we're waiting on NJDEP for that approval. We have other planning projects in queue, we have 240 Main Street, we have 18 Camden Street, 150 River Street, which is the old record site. We're working with the county on the probation site, along with the, and New Jersey Transit, to make that a transit hub and an upgrade, and also include vertical development in there on that property. We have initiated the construction drawings with the two-way street conversion of state and Main. I did tell you about the signalization grants that we're attempting to get, I believe now that we've made the first cut, we should see some success in that. Whether we get all the money requested or not, obviously remains to be seen. We have a project at Old Bridge Street, we've had pre-application, 161 Main Street, 149 Main Street. The Aldi supermarket is currently before the planning board, it's a construction of a 17,000 square foot supermarket on the old Sears site, which adds, obviously, shopping for new residents on Main Street. Again, we have 311 to 321 Main Street, pre-application meeting. Project manager, which is out of my office, capital projects completed, we have the Columbus Park Improvements Playground, we have the completion of the Emergency Operations Center, which is near the, adjacent to the fire department, 2013 municipal aid grant, we are in construction, or we completed the Firehouse Number Two Summit Avenue, which was mandated by the state. We completed the 2013 CDBG resurfacing program, which we received funds from the county. The Bergen County Open Space Trust Fund, Pulaski Park was completed, the second ward park repair storage tank was completed, the old Hoboken Road drainage improvements were Police Department. In 2014, there was 103,853 calls for service by our residents. There were 3,039 arrests, which is an increase of 298 over 2013. So our men and women in blue are busy. Patrol and quality of life, there was 15,556 summons is issued, which included 6,581 moving violations and 8,975 parking violations. Detective Bureau had 2,035 cases in 2014. There were 50 arrests were made as a result of DWI. There were 2,759 accidents in the city. There were 416 persons that were injured, unfortunately, we had three fatalities due to accidents. Also accidents, 92 pedestrians, as well as 13 cyclists, bicyclists included in those Youth Division, 585 juvenile cases were investigated. Our fire department. State registrations, 425, local registrations, 2,633. Periodic inspections performed, 2,749. Violations issued, 5,336. Remember, those are all in the name of public safety. Total inspections performed, including re-inspections and complaints, 10,177. Our building department. Permit count for 2014 was 1,444. You can see inspection scheduled, the breakdown, you can see two, three, four, five, six, about 6,500 inspections between plumbing, fire, electrical, and building subcodes. Emergency calls for the building department, this occurs if there's a fire, if there's water damage, especially during the winter when pipes freeze and break. They had 65 calls after hours and 75 calls during regular hours. Our municipal court, there were 47,641 tickets entered in 2014. There was 48, over 48,000 tickets disposed. Criminal cases, 3,312. Criminal cases disposed, 4,211. Taxes, our tax collector, you can see the receipts, that's a big number, so what is that, 160 million? Parking coin receipts, 434,000. Tax assessor, unfortunately, there's 450 tax court appeals still outstanding. 2014 had 594 county tax appeals issued. As of February 27, 2015, for the tax year of 2015, there are 496 state tax court appeals and approximately 25 at the county level. What is that, what's that, is telling us, it isn't over yet. Department of Public Works, they renovated City Hall, it's called auditing department, I call it finance, or Jim Mannion's place.
Call it home.
They obviously maintain and bring the showmobile around, they maintain five pump stations, they do all the custodial work by the maintenance department, they maintain all the sprinkler and fire alarm systems throughout the city, they do the holiday lighting and decorations throughout the city. I think we've all enjoyed that over the years, I know I had my first experience and it is, I can say that it rivals most cities in the area, in fact, I think it's better. I won't name any names. They also have a tree department, they top over 110 trees due to hazards, they've stumped 126, and they trimmed 160-plus trees. Snow removal and salt, are salting our city roads. They also have the city garage that's responsible for maintaining all the vehicles, they maintain City Hall and Health Department vehicles as well, and they do handle all the registration and titles for the city vehicles. DPW Sewer Department, 100-plus work orders were entered and completed in 2014, they also do stormwater basins inspection for debris removal, they also PM program acute sewer areas, they clean on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, they also do emergency callouts. Street Department, they completed 18 different concrete sidewalk projects, they do repair and install handicap mats, which is an ongoing process. We fixed a lot of potholes this year, in fact, 7,500 hot patches and 820 cold patches during the winter. They also declare, clear debris from streets 187 different times. They also completed 32 catch basins and manholes, sanitation and recycling. Total garbage collected, 19,000-plus tons, at a cost of over $1 million. Recycling, 3,030 tons. We challenge all the business owners and all the people of Hackett-Sack, we can raise that number up, which means we get more money from the state. That's the revenue that we receive from that. We do get a recycling grant as well, due to our recycling. Our Health Department, vital records, 313 people tied to knot, 642 marriages were recorded, 15,675 birth certificates issued, obviously, with the hospital in town, we get a lot of those. Marriage certificates, over 1,300 issued, that means if you need extra certificates or unfortunately, if you are getting a divorce, you do need to have those. Unfortunately, 4,900 death certificates were issued, so for a total of 21,900-plus total certificates. Environmental health, which has 958 inspections, animal license, 157 cats, 723 dogs, and I bet there's more of them out there than that get licenses, so that'll be something that we need to improve.
Amazing, some people.
Okay, immunization activity, there was 11 clinics held. School age total, 419, adults totaled 817 that visited those clinics. They have a health conference, which they did hold additional clinics, total number of visits of 212. We have a WIC program, 1,471 mothers were helped that have young children. Our library, you can see the circulation of the different types of books, magazines, media, downloadable, notably, children's and books and magazines, 57,600 is really the notable one on there. Library, the number that jumped out at me was reference questions, 24,000. Internet usage was like 44,000. Recreation, we have youth basketball, junior soccer, baseball, basketball. Summer program, over 20 trips kids were taken on as part of our summer program. We had a theater camp, we had an adventure camp for the older kids, open gym night for basketball, actually on a daily basis. Senior citizens, we have some lunches and, that are served, they are a fun group to be with. We have an Easter egg hunt, and of course, the July 4th fireworks events, they host a cheerleading program, Halloween party, and a children's holiday party. Cultural arts, that's the schedule that we held last year, we had a variety of different events, from a show called Doubt to a spring art show, to, I think the most successful was You're in Town in September, and we had Rugrats Live in November for the kids. Our city clerk, 743 Oprah requests, raffle license is 33. Council meetings, there were four special meetings and 23 regular meetings. Auditing, which I refer to the finance. Our goal last year was long-term stabilization, a budget objective shows that we've improved that by holding, having a snow removal reserve and an accumulated absence reserve for when people retire, that we set up these funds in reserve so that when things go wrong, we're not hit with the tax increase the following year. Our goal was also a more accurate budget, and just look at the transfers between 2014 of about 800,000 and the budget transfers of 213, that's 2,800,000. What that's telling you is that our budget is much more accurate, and we trust that 2015 will be even more accurate. Tax appeals settled, paid in 2014, $8,175,648. We financed 6200, or 6,200 of that. Long-term debt, 4.1 million for the combined sewer overflow project, and 8.65 million for the tax appeal refunding. Two and a half million on other projects, results in a $15 million new debt. As a result, however, our net debt, as you can see, in 2014, we had about 39 million, 2011 was 43,523. So we are doing better, and if you didn't have the tax appeal refunding, we would be much lower than that. That ends the year-end report. Mayor and council, I think the purpose of this, from my perspective, I think it's very important to have the you and the taxpayers understand what city government has done each year, and what a service we do provide. I know a lot of people get frustrated, but we have, we are a big city, and we have a lot of people and a lot of things to take care of, and all in all, as your city manager, though I've been here now almost over five months, I am blessed to be able to work with you to make this city better. Now, I'm going to move right into the budget, and I'm going to make some preliminary remarks, and the budget man is next to me, Mr. Jim Mannion, and I'm going to go through the process first of all. In early October, we had a department head meeting, and we, I instructed the department heads to assess the needs of their departments and to send their budget requests to Jim on a certain format. The requests were compiled from the department heads with a proposed tax increase of 6.38%. We had a meeting with the finance committee, we had discussions with the finance committee. After that, I requested each department to cut their budgets by 10%. Needless to say, some of them were not very happy with that. As a result of the cuts that they proposed, we were at a 5.7% increase. Jim and I had a conversation, we said, why don't we take the budget and each of us separately go through the budget and make our own proposed cuts, and we'll meet at a later date, which we did. And the good news is Jim and I actually proposed very similar cuts to the budget, and that was, we did it separately. We held the second finance committee meeting, and the results of that very complex process with the department heads, the finance committee, and with Jim and I, we are proposing, which is, under this form of government, the manager proposes the budget and hands it off as, at the introduction to the city council. This is not the manager's budget, I would call it the manager's and the CFO's budget along with the department heads. This was a concerted effort, and a lot of time was spent. So we're proposing a 3.99% municipal tax increase, which equates an average increase for assessed home within the city at a value of 239,263, or an increase of $155.99. Let me give a basic framework of the budget, and then Jim will build on that. The increase in dollars of the budget between 2014 and 2015 is $2.9 million. Understand the following, the debt service increase due to the tax appeals is 1.5 million. Please understand one thing, is that the city portion of your taxes, or this council, is responsible to refund the taxpayers who have won tax appeals. Those are tax appeals that have occurred over years. The other portion of the tax pie is the schools, the library, and the county. They are not required to pay any of that money back, it's the city of Hackett-Sack or this council is responsible for that. So we bear the entire cost of paying that money back. We had a pension and social security increase of 5.1%, which is, equates to about $417,000. We had insurance premium increase of 5%, which equates to $868,000. The library, understanding the public's request for bringing back the funding of the library, this budget proposes an increase of 1.9% over last year's budgeted appropriation. Let me split that up, the state formula requirement is $1,845,132. There is an additional appropriation of 925,000 from the city, which totals, I think I have the wrong number written here, but Jim can expound on that further. Salary and wages, and now remember, the supermajority of the contractual increases make up this number, the overall average of salary increases is 1.9%. So if you add up the debt service, the insurance increase, and the pension and social security increase, that's $2,785,521. Now just go back to the 2.9 million that I described earlier. So a lot of the budget has been modified and corrected to where we're at now through a lot of hard work of the city employees. So with that, I'm going to turn over the more detailed analysis to Jim.
Yeah. Where's the cursor? Hey, where'd you go? Could've hit escape. I see the cursor up there. Okay, come on. Control. Oh, wait, here we go. Here I am. Why is it my turn? All right, so again, to repeat a little bit what David said, we're here tonight to introduce the 2015 municipal budget, and it's important to realize that the budget that we're And it's important to realize that the budget that we're presenting is a very thoughtful budget. A lot of thought went into it. A lot of decisions were made and they weren't made likely, they were made according to a plan. Oh, there we go. First you start with budget goal. Now this is the exact same goal that we had last year and that's to craft a budget that's accurate, sets the framework for long-term tax stability while providing the funding and planning necessary for redevelopment and community improvements. Okay, that's what we want this budget to accomplish. Now, last year during the budget presentation, this slide came directly from last year. We had said that the key to improving the quality of life here in Hackensack, and we define the quality of life as providing more service while stabilizing taxes. Okay, and the reason we say that is because you can easily provide more service, okay? All you have to do is raise taxes. You can easily stabilize taxes, all you have to do is eliminate service. The trick is to provide more service and stabilize taxes at the same time. The way you do that is to reverse the trend of declining valuations, declining property values, what we showed last year, which is a major problem here in Hackensack. And we said last year that the long-term solution for that is redevelopment and that the short-term objective would be to make Hackensack attractive to developers. Well, this year what we're doing is, we're taking a slightly different approach because quite frankly, development is a good long-term solution, but it takes too long. Okay, what we need to do is we need to address some property tax issues that are going on right now. So in that, you know, with that in mind, the 2015 budget objective now is to make Hackensack more attractive to investors. Okay, and we define investors as two different groups. We've got developers, you know, and a developer is somebody who's going to take a vacant piece of property or an underutilized piece of property, improve it, which will then increase its value. And if that happens on a large scale, property values increase. And as we said, when property values increase, the tax rate decreases. Okay, so in order to make Hackensack attractive to investors, to developers, what they want is a tax structure that's fair. They want their properties assessed fairly, they want to be taxed fairly. The other group of investors that we're addressing are homeowners. Now homeowners are less concerned with the tax structure. They want a tax rate that's fair. Their concern is the property tax bill that they get in the mail. All right, not really content to wait for redevelopment to kick in for tax relief. They want tax relief now. Okay, so now we've got two groups, one wanting a tax structure that's fair, the other wanting a tax rate that's fair. Now to address the issue of the tax structure, what we need to do is continue what we started in 2014. We need to aggressively, continue to aggressively attack the tax appeal issue. As David said earlier, in 2014, we paid out over $8.1 million in tax appeal refunds. Okay, to stop the inflow of tax appeals, what we had said was that we need to do is a citywide reassessment. Okay, currently, right now, we're out for RFPs. We're requesting proposals for a citywide reassessment. That's on the website right now and we hope to award that contract at the April 7th meeting. Also, as David indicated in his report, in 2015, right now, we have $6.2 million in tax appeals to be financed this year and it's climbing. You know, you'll see every couple of meetings, you'll get a resolution with a number of tax appeals. To show how aggressively we've been attacking the tax appeal issue, you see that in 2014, which is the bar all the way to the right, there's your 8.175, uh, 8.1 million. Now in years past, you know, Hackensack has always been paying tax appeals ever since the revow in 2007 and the reassessment in 2011. But from this slide, you can see just how aggressively we took the issue on in 2014. Homeowners, though, they're looking for a fair tax rate. Now what we need to do is we know that taxes are going to increase to address the tax appeal issue. They have to, all right? Since the increase is inevitable, what we need to do is reduce spending where we can without reducing services. That's a trick. If we reduce services, then what's going to happen is the homeowners are going to move out and mess. They do that, it drives property values down and just defeats the purpose. So as David indicated, the 2015 budget that we're proposing is a 3.99% increase to the tax levy. That translates to an increase to the average homeowner of, as David said, $155.99. Now just so you know, the, there's a lot of ways to spin a tax increase. Okay, and in fact, in the next couple of weeks, if you read the record, you'll see a lot of municipalities doing their budgets now, you'll see an increase to the tax rate, an increase to the tax levy, an increase to your tax bill, an increase to the average home, all kinds of different ways. It's the increase to the average homeowner that I've always found is the, it's the fairest way to show what a tax increase is. Now the average home in Hackensack is assessed at 239,000. Your home's assessed at 239,000, there's your increase. If it's assessed a little bit more, your increase is going to be a little more. Assessed a little less, it'll be, your tax bill will be a little less. Now this we showed last year, this is the percentage increase to the municipal levy here in Hackensack. This is the problem that we're, that we're trying to combat. These spikes, the peaks and valleys of your tax increases, this is what's going to scare away your developers, all right, because it shows instability. Okay, you shouldn't be able to look at a graph like this of your tax increases and figure out what your election cycle is. Okay, that's just wrong. That's exactly what developers don't want. They want stability. Okay, that's what we were, that's what we're attempting to do. Okay, you can see in 2014, okay, the tax increase was 4.3% and then you see the 2015 all the way to the right is the 3.9% increase that we're proposing. Okay, so again, getting back to our investors, the developers are looking for a tax structure that's fair. In order to achieve that, we need to increase spending on a tax appeal issue. The same time, homeowners want a tax rate that's fair. So we need to decrease spending on everything else that we can. That was what we were faced in this budget. Now as we indicated, the tax increase on the average home is $155.99. If you split out all of the increases associated with the tax appeal issue, you see that $80.28 or 2% of the total tax increase is attributed to the tax appeal issue. Everything else is $75.71 or 1.9%. Said another way, if we didn't have a tax appeal issue, the increase we were looking at would be about a 1.9 with a $75 increase to the average home. Okay, David indicated the total budget increase is 2.9 million. Of that 2.9 million, as he said, debt service, mainly because of the tax appeals, is 1.5 million. Health benefits and insurance are 868,000. Pension and social security, 417,000. And then everything else in the budget, all salaries, all operating budgets, grants, capital, utilities, everything else in the budget, the items that we have the most control over, only increased 127,000. If you take the budget and break it up and put it into a pie chart, you see that debt service is the main reason, the main thing that's driving this tax increase. Now the other, that portion, that 127,000, okay, what makes that up? Well, as David indicated, the salaries and wages, 798,000, okay? Total salaries in Hackensack are about 40 million. That equates to just under a 2% increase. All of the department operating budgets altogether, roughly about $7 million in the budget, only increased $8,458. And keep in mind, included in that is about a $240,000 increase in the tax assessor's budget to take on the tax appeal issue. Okay, that gives you an idea of how the other budgets were cut. Utilities, electric, telephone, we saw a decrease this year, the BCUA bill for sewage, that's down 112,000. As David indicated, the library budget's been bumped up about 1.9%, 52,000. Grants are down 221,000, but that's a little deceiving because grants come in all year long and as they come in, we amend the budget, we include them. So what we're comparing here are grants at the beginning of 2015 to the end of 2014. So it's a little deceiving, okay? Capital is down the 214,000. If you remember last year, we increased capital from 200,000 to 400,000. Then we increased it in the amended budget from 400,000 to 614,000 to bring over revenue from the 911 upgrade project. Well, that project is just about completed, so the revenue is gone, now the budget goes down. Deferred charges are just cleanup leftover from 2013. That was $180,000 tax appeal issue from the 2013 budget, was raised in the 2014 budget and it's completely eliminated in the 2015 budget. The areas that we have control or some control over, salaries and wages. Now this is from 2011 to 2015 and you see that the increases are fairly steady. Okay, you saw that the increase, that the slope from 2013 to 2014 was a lot less, okay? And then from 2014 to 2015, again, 798,000. Now the department's operating expenses kind of tells a different story. You can see that from 2011 to 2013, there was a pretty steep increase in the department's operating budgets, okay? But from 2013, 7.5 million, to 2015, in two years, you see it's only an increase of 110,000. Okay, that's where, as David indicated, we made the bulk of the cuts in the department's operating budgets. And the trick is to do that without eliminating programs, without reducing services, no layoffs, no furloughs, okay? It's just an awful lot of belt tightening. This graph shows you what the, what the library's budget is. This goes back to 2005 and if you could see, a little tough to see, but to the left from 2005 to 2008, you saw library growth was pretty steady, okay? But from 2008 to 2013, library growth was enormous, okay? And if you remember, the library funding is based on property values. So when the library budget increased from 2008 to 2013, if you remember, it occurred at the exact same time that property values declined here in Hackensack. Property values that same period dropped a billion dollars. The difference was made up, that's the donation, okay, from the city. That's why we say, you know, we said this last year, Hackensack donates more to their library over and above the statutory amount. Any other municipality in Bergen County, I'd venture to say any other municipality in New Jersey, but I'm not going to do the research and check every single website of every municipality. You see in 20, from 2013 to 2014, the decline, that's the cut that we made last year. And from 2014 to 2015, again, just under a 2% increase. That's pretty much the budget, okay? You have the budget documents there, you can see the individual increases in all the separate departments, okay? What the budget attempts to do, or I usually end with a budget action plan, is we want this budget to continue to make Hackensack more attractive to developers, okay? The way we do that is we want to keep making the tax structure as fair as possible. We're doing that with the citywide reassessment. And we want to continue to make the infrastructure improvements. We talked last year a lot about how the infrastructure was really ignored, okay? We want to keep repairing the sewers, repairing the streets, improving the parks. David just went through all the improvements that we did last year. Okay, we need to keep doing that, okay? Same time, we got to continue to make Hackensack attractive to homeowners. Homeowners have already made the decision to invest here in Hackensack. Now what we want them to do is we want them to actually increase their investment, fix up their house, put on an addition, renovate a bathroom, fix your roof. If everybody did that, property values would then increase, be the same result as if developers came in, you know, they've got the same stake in it. Okay, in order to do that, in order to keep Hackensack attractive to homeowners that are here already, we really need to hold the line on spending, particularly in salaries and operating expenses. And as David indicated, right now, we've got an awful lot of labor contracts that are open, okay? Admittedly, we've taken a very hard stand on the labor contracts. We have to, all right? We know the increase in taxes that we have to incur to take on the tax appeal issue, all right? And we can't put that whole burden on taxpayers, all right? We have to find savings where we can. In addition, we're going to keep, you know, we're going to anticipate the necessary increase in debt service to pay for the tax appeals. We know it's there, okay, we can't ignore it. And what we're going to attempt to do is offset that increase in debt service as much as we can and get into a more page you go approach for our capital improvements. And you've seen that, you know, so many ordinances that we're doing, that we're fully funding through capital surplus or through our capital improvement fund. Okay, that's the budget that's before you, okay? The public hearing is scheduled for April 7th, regular council meeting, 8:00 PM here, okay? In a couple of days, we will have the same budget documents that you have on the desks will be available to the public, all right? They could pick them up. We'll have copies in the, in the library, we'll have a copy posted on the website as well, okay? If you have any questions at all, any part of this, I'd be happy to entertain them. If not tonight, you can always contact me if you have any questions on the 10,000 numbers that you've got in front of you.
All right, so any comments or questions from the council at this point?
I have one.
Good job.
I really, I really want to congratulate everybody involved with the budget, Jim, David, Kathy, Rose.
Talking to Jim.
I can see that you guys did a really, really good job. I know sometimes Jimmy here at 7 o'clock at night every day, you know? I am really happy that the numbers, they really looked really, really good. Thank you guys.
I want to echo that, I mean, congratulations and thanks a lot to David, to Jim and to all the department heads who really, you know, dug deep and said, you know, we're going to be a team, we're going to work together to get this budget as lean and mean as we can. So, you know, that we can, we understand the burden we have with these tax appeals and we have to face them head on and we all have to work together. And that's really what you see here is a good working team that says we're coming together for the benefit of the city, you know, and not to repeat everything that they said, but to try and make it as simple, in as simple terms as I can, you know, they're talking about appropriations. Basically what that is, is they're trying to estimate, how much are we going to spend next year? That's what they're talking about. What's it going to cost us to run the city? And the increase in what they think it's going to cost us to run the city next year was 2.9 million, okay, out of a $97 million budget. And when you look at the breakdown of what that is, I mean, they call these things right out for you here. We know our debt service, our debt service had to increase because we had a bond for these tax appeals, right? That was 1.5 million, yes? Insurance costs, we have general insurance, we have health insurance, everyone knows that health insurance is a driver in everyone's economy. That was almost another 900,000. So you've got 1.5 and 900,000 and .9, so you're at 2.4 already. Okay, then on top of that, remember the pension system, the social security system, those numbers are dictated to us. We can't negotiate, we can't go back to the pension board and say, hey, I don't think we really want to pay that much. We can't go to social security and say, I don't really think I want to pay that much. That was another increase of 400,000, so .4. So we were at, we were at 2.4 and .4, so that's 2.8 of the 2.9 million, think about it. So that increase of 2.9, those three drivers basically make up almost that entire increase. So the ability of this group of folks working for the city to keep the remainder of that cost that low, I think everyone in the city should feel proud and honored that they did a great job in helping the city out this year and we thank you very much.
Thank you. Dave?
Kudos to Dave and Jim, great job. I have just one question. What was the library last year?
Library's budget last year was 2,717,000. Believe this year it's 2,770,000. Not 100% sure, but I'm pretty sure.
Took a $60,000.
About a $53,000.
$53,000 increase, yeah.
Like 2% increase.
Ms. Greenman?
Again, I want to thank you, Mr. Magan, Mr. Trust, did a great job. Thank you for your support staff, the department heads. Under very difficult conditions, you did a great job and I salute all the departments that took 10% cut. Unfortunately, we took a bet with one of the contracts and I'm glad that you're keeping to making sure that we don't overspend on salaries. to making sure that we don't overspend on salaries with the rest of our labor. It's not because we don't value the services that the police and the fire department provide, and white collar workers, and all the other unions, everybody's doing their job, and unfortunately, we just cannot go to the taxpayers, taxpayers, and keep asking them for more money. So everyone had to tighten their belt, and you did a wonderful job by asking them, and they did a great job by doing it. I would like to ask about the figure one hundred and fifty-five ninety-nine. That represents only the municipal portion of the tax. And we're looking to about another one hundred fifty-five ninety-nine, about another fifty percent more?
Well, that's the municipal increase, you know? Now, to that, you have to add the county increase when the county does their budget, and the school increase when the school does their budget.
And it's usually about fifty percent, forty to fifty percent more?
It's really hard to say. Hackensack's a little bit different than most municipalities. The municipal portion of the tax bill is actually the largest portion. You don't see that too often, usually it's the schools.
Right. So what are we, so what are we looking realistically to the taxpayers' pocket?
Well, I'd say it's a little hard to tell just yet, okay? School will be doing their budget, you know, very soon, if not this month, early next month. That'll give us a better idea. The counties usually a little bit later, you know, they usually come about in May, sometimes the end of June. When that does happen, though, we will come back and give you an idea of what the total taxing.
Yeah, I just don't want the taxpayers to walk away thinking, you know, on the average, if we live in this average home, it's going to cost us a hundred fifty-six dollars.
Only the municipal portion.
It's only the municipal, thank you so much, appreciate it.
I want to thank the finance committee, especially Jim and David. I want to thank all the department heads, all the departments that dug deep and cleaned up their budgets and did what you asked them, the ones that did, we certainly appreciate it. The charts are what they are, the numbers don't lie, shows how things have flattened out. Basically, what the city of Hackensack has gotten this year, if you take that two point eight million that Mrs. Canestrino just alluded to, it's only gone up about a hundred, a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's almost a flat budget, folks, which is incredible in this, in this day and age, taking away the other three items. Again, the driving number here was the tax appeals. I want to thank everybody for buying into the fact, and folks out there watching this and listening have to realize, this council could have easily, easily pushed off these tax appeals down the road and made them somebody else's problem. We decided we weren't going to do that, we needed to address it, it had to be done. State was going to make us do it sooner or later. We put a plan together, a, you know, finance plan together to do this in a, in a way that we felt the city could handle, and the local finance board agreed with us, gave us the loan, or gave us the bonding this year, and I'm sure they'll do the same again next year based on looking at this budget. That's why this budget is so important. We can go back to the local finance board with this and say, look what we're doing, all right? And it's going to help us to acquire the bond next time we have to do it, which we will have to do. But like I said, we could have, we could have blown this, these tax appeals off for a year or two, pushed it down the line, and, you know, made it look like a totally different budget when in fact we were still in trouble. And we took this head-on, we said we were going to do it, we did it, and I want to thank everybody for buying into that. And I thank the citizens for realizing it was the best thing to do. Again, congratulations, I think it's a, it's a great, great presentation, great budget, and thank you, guys, appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to take, we'll do like a five-minute recess, a couple minutes real quick. Everybody be seated, please, thank you.
Can't do anything without you.
You kind of, make sure you pull the, make sure we pull the towing ordinance, right?
Yes, that's.
Which one is that?
It's resolution number eighty-one dash fifteen.
Mm-hmm, so we're pulling that. Resolution eighty-one dash fifteen, the towing ordinance will be pulled tonight. Okay, resolution seventy-nine dash fifteen?
Is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number six dash two thousand and fifteen, an ordinance amending Part Two entitled General Legislation, Chapter one seventy entitled Vehicles and Traffic of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section fifty entitled Schedule One No Parking, Section fifty-one entitled Schedule Two No Parking Certain Hours, Section fifty-three entitled Schedule Four Time Limit Parking. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come to the podium, give your name and address to the clerk, you have five minutes. Oh, no, I'm sorry, you don't have, this is open, yeah. No, you can, you can go more than five on this, sorry.
Do you have a comment on the ordinance?
Right. Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Motion to adopt a.
Motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number six dash two thousand and fifteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution eighty dash fifteen?
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number seven dash two thousand and fifteen, a capital ordinance of the City of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, New Jersey, authorizing an ordinance for the spray ground improvement at Carver Park and appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and providing that such sum so appropriated shall be raised from the fund balance of the General Capital Fund of the City of Hackensack. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Have a motion open to the public, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk.
Hackensack, Hudson Street, Hackensack. Just so that all the paperwork gets done fast, so this thing could be used before the summer is finished, because last time we had a big problem, this is before your time, I'm not going to blame you, we had a big problem that it didn't get done in time. So we learned a lot from doing the first, the first one, and this one should be a piece of cake. And it shouldn't go on easy, but the paperwork is, really holds us up, because the quicker we get the bids in, the quicker we can start the project, and hopefully we can get it done by July fourth, or what's your, what's your goal?
Open it before summer ends, and you sure it's not a piece of cannoli?
Piece of cake, that was my, my plan, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Nix, Hackensack? I have been going by that project. This thing is a disgusting mess. Now, I guess the landscape is separate from the building contractor?
Are you talking, the project hasn't started yet, Mr. Nix. We're talking about a splash park at Carver Park for the kids.
Wrong park.
All right.
Well, I guess with that old dilapidated building next to Carver Park and fixing up Carver Park, maybe the city can, uh, the kids want to go to a nice place. He's spending three hundred and fif, I'm spending three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a piece of property surrounded, Hackensack auto records are there, just burnt out, just whatever building, and I think we should get and clean up the, we should always, but in this particular case, clean up the surrounding area so the kids go down there and don't look at this junk.
Thank you. Skipping eighty-one, oh, I'm sorry. Motion to close?
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Motion to adopt?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County of Bergen and State of New Jersey that ordinance number seven dash two thousand and fifteen has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-two dash fifteen?
Is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number nine dash two thousand and fifteen, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Have a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance number nine dash two thousand and fifteen as introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on March twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, at eight o'clock P.M. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-three dash fifteen?
Is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number ten dash two thousand and fifteen, a bond ordinance providing for various road improvements buy-in in the city of Hackensack and the County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, appropriating one million eighty-eight thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of one million thirty-six thousand dollars bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance ten dash two thousand and fifteen as introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on March twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, at eight o'clock P.M. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard and, to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-four dash fifteen?
Is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number eleven dash two thousand and fifteen, an ordinance amending Part Two entitled General Legislation, Chapter one seventy entitled Vehicles and Traffic for the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section fifty entitled Schedule One No Parking.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance eleven dash two thousand and fifteen as introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on March twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, at eight o'clock P.M. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-five dash fifteen?
Is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number twelve dash two thousand and fifteen, an ordinance amending Chapter one seventy entitled Vehicles and Traffic of Part Two entitled General Legislation of the City of Hackensack Municipal Code to amend Section one seventy dash seventy-one E-ten and Section one seventy dash seventy-one E-eleven.
You said amend or add?
I said and.
You said amend, it's add.
Oh, and.
Have a motion, please. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance being ordinance twelve dash two thousand and fifteen as introduced is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on March twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, at eight o'clock P.M. or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk be and she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution eighty-six dash fifteen?
Eighty-six dash fifteen is a resolution to reduce this two thousand and fourteen levy by tax appeal judgments.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution eighty-seven dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to convert the below charges to property means.
Have a motion, please. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution eighty-eight dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing the city manager to provide written notice of intent to terminate an interlocal agreement.
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution eighty-nine dash fifteen?
Is a resolution to authorize the submission of S.F.Y. two thousand and fifteen, Section three nineteen H, Nonpoint Source Pollution Control Grant.
Have a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution ninety dash fifteen?
Is a resolution proclaiming March fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, as National Poison Prevention Week in New Jersey.
Have a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution, sorry, ninety-one dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing tax refunds?
Have a motion, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bataglia?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Councilmember Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Resolution ninety-two dash fifteen?
Is a resolution authorizing a raffle license for Holy Trinity Church.
Member motion, please. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution ninety-three dash fifteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement.
Member motion, please. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution ninety-four dash fifteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel interest payment for Block Three Twenty-three Lot Twenty-nine.
Member motion, please.
Offered.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution ninety-five dash fifteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel interest for Block Fifty-six Lot Eight.
Motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution ninety-six dash fifteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the tax collector to cancel interest for Block One Eighteen Lot Seven Point O-two.
Motion, please.
Offered.
Roll call. Second. Sorry. Kidding you. Don't worry yourself.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims. Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus. Are you here?
Aye.
Okay.
Before we go any further, could I ask, Council?
Yes.
Do we have to go through a full roll call, or in a case where we have numerous resolutions like this, or can we say all in favor?
These, I believe, under our rules of procedure require roll call.
Okay. Thank you. Just checking.
Thanks for the try.
Just checking, trying to save my clerk's voice. Resolution ninety-seven dash fifteen.
It's a resolution setting compensation for the tax appeal attorney.
Motion, please. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution ninety-eight dash fifteen.
Is a resolution awarding the contract for remedial investigation services to T and M Associates for the Hackensack Fire Headquarters.
Member motion, please. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution ninety-nine dash fifteen.
Is emergency temporary appropriations prior to the adoption of the budget per NJSA forty-eight colon four dash twenty.
Member motion, please.
Offered.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution one hundred dash fifteen.
It's a resolution authorizing the amendment of Resolution Four Fifty-eight dash fourteen for the proposed Bergen County Community Development Grants two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen. What it was, was they were all connected together, and we didn't realize there was three, so we had to amend it to add these two.
Okay. Member motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution one oh one dash fifteen.
A resolution authorizing the execution of settlement agreement for H U M C.
Motion, please.
Offered.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
I'm going to abstain.
Mayor LaBrus.
I abstain.
Resolution one oh two dash fifteen.
This is a resolution qualifying the prosecutor and the assistant prosecutor, and the names that will go in for the municipal prosecutor is Frank Catania, and the municipal assistant prosecutor would be Lynn Schwager.
Member motion, please.
Offered.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution one oh three dash fifteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the two thousand and fifteen budget to be read by title only.
Member motion, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Resolution one oh four dash fifteen.
Is a resolution authorizing the two thousand and fifteen municipal budget introduction.
Motion, please. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
And last but not least, the payment of the bills, Resolution one oh five dash fifteen.
Resolution authorizing the payment of bills with the current fund at eight million three hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents. Grants are three hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Payroll is one million five hundred and seven thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and eighty-seven cents. Public marketing, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-three cents. Capital, nine hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Escrow, thirty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. Trust account, one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars, seventy-six cents. Total expenditures, ten million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-one cents. Inter funds and transfers is one hundred and thirty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars and thirty cents.
Have a motion to pay the bills, please.
Offered.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
Thank you for everybody for sticking it out tonight, through the long night, to get to this point. The motion open to the public, please.
Second.
Councilmember Pataglia.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino.
Aye.
Councilmember Sims.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenman.
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus.
Aye.
At this point, anybody who'd like to speak, come up to the podium, and give your name and address. We have five minutes. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
My name is John Cassillon, three nine three Jackson Avenue, Hackensack.
Okay. What can we do for you, sir?
Yeah, recently I'm come here, and I want question the city manager. Go right ahead. Yeah. You know anything what's going on on Breland Avenue on Friday one-thirty? Breland Avenue at one-thirty? Uh-huh. Is there? Excuse me? I believe that is the county is looking to auction off the county. Correct, correct, correct. I am aware of that. You were, but you never see, right? You never saw. Never saw what? What's going on over there one-thirty? Every Friday. The mosque, the mosque. Oh, the mosque? Yes. You're asking about the mosque? The mosque, the mosque. Where they have the prayer service. Yes, yes. I am aware of that situation. What's going on over there? Looks like Iraq over there. It's like what? Iraq. Car one on top another. You only lot to park twelve, twenty-one car, and they got about fifty car there. You can do that or not? I would have to check with the traffic. The traffic. Traffic enforcement officers. Well, the traffic, he knows all about, but nobody do anything. Is every Friday? Yeah, they have a prayer service, I believe, at one o'clock. For an hour? Yeah. For an hour. Yes, yes. Between one and two. Yes. Car park all over, five drive, on the side, all the way on the corner. You can make a right turn or left a turn, on the stop sign. The, we did have a meeting, and the people of the mosque were told that they cannot illegally park, otherwise they will be ticketed if they're parked too close to the stop sign. Yes. Fifty feet. Yeah. Fifty feet, or about five feet. Well, the law is fifty feet. Right. So enforcement will take place. Yes. As you know, I don't direct the police. I can only suggest. So it'll be up to the traffic captain to follow through on that request. Well, the traffic department, he knows all about the situation. I had a meeting with them, with the people from the mosque. But what they told me, what I know, is you to take care of this matter. Who? I'm going to? Yeah. We had a meeting, but I don't do, I'm not authorized to write tickets, sir. But you were authorized to send a cop there? I can suggest that they go there. All right, the cop came there two times only. Last week, and he was the cop there. I will speak to the police director again on that issue. Who's this police, who's this police director? Michael Mordaga. Oh, yeah, I know Mike. What did he do? He do anything? I will, I will speak to him, and then he will speak to his captain who's involved, who is the traffic captain to, I can't direct the police in police matters. I'm not in charge of the daily operations. That is the role of the police director. Don't I was Mike supposed to do that job? No, Mike is supposed to direct his staff to do that job. I ultimately am responsible, but I cannot direct legally police officers to go do certain things. You know, what I suggest, excuse me, sir, I'm talk. Excuse me. What I suggest you on a Friday to take a ride today one-thirty, and you can see yourself what's going on? Because I know Miss Manny, when he used to be city manager, he was black man, nice man. He used to supervise himself. All the man. I'm a long time in this town there. I know what's going on. I know everybody. I can't get out in the morning out of my driveway. Kind for the school, the problem they got with the school there. The line car. The street is too narrow. I can't get out of the driveway in the morning. What is your address? Three nine three.
Gentlemen, your five minutes is up. I thank you. The city manager's gonna look into this. He's gonna speak to Mr. Mordaga. We'll get somebody over there Friday. If there's people parked illegally on Friday, they will be ticketed.
Thank you very much, Mr. May.
I will add this comment. I do work, one of the gentlemen I work with, who happens to be Muslim, is a doctor at the hospital where I work. As said, they have been receiving tickets over there for a while, but we'll stay on top of it.
I saw the cop there two times. Last week, and he was no cop.
Right.
You're gonna see him more often.
They'll be there. We'll take care of it.
All right. Thank you very much. What's your street? Three nine three Jackson Avenue. Gotcha. Jackson Avenue. By the school. Yep. Know where it is. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Maria Cassillon, John Cassillon's sister. And I'm on thirty Breland Avenue, Hackensack, two doors away from the mosque. And on a Friday afternoon, it's simply a nightmare, Breland Avenue, between the exit of Route Eighty, the school traffic, Hudson Street. Takes me about twenty minutes that I, when I have to cross the street to go by my brother. This is no quality of life. And they have a parking spot which they have an agreement with the Immaculate Conception Church to park their cars. They supposed to be only twenty-one cars, but there's about forty or fifty cars in the parking lot, including parking on the no parking site, cars by the fire zone, cars by the fire hydrant, cars by the stop sign, cars all the way into Jackson Avenue by the gate of the Jackson Avenue School. Now they taking even Williams Avenue. And next month, they put in, they put in a petition that they wanna get rid of the private residents, and they wanna enlarge the place to make a worship. So this means it's gonna be more cars coming into our community. I don't think this is fair.
If there's an application that before either the planning board or the zoning board, which if they are looking to enlarge or change the use, they will need permits to do that, or approvals through one of the boards. And at that time, you obviously can attend that meeting.
Oh, I will.
And you can voice your opinions on that, and hire any experts that you would like, and review any of the documentation that's been submitted.
I did. I did. I did a whole, my homework. So I'm fully aware of what's going on. And I'll, believe me, I don't like it. And the, what do you call the president? He approached me nicely, and he made a suggestion if I would offer to let them park in my driveway, four or five cars. Now, would you think I would do something stupid like that?
I wouldn't.
It's my private driveway. I wouldn't let anybody pull in my driveway. And then probably from five cars, he would park twelve cars. So that's not a place to have, I mean, it's gotta be limited, not to bring as many people as they want. This is all I wanna say.
What I would recommend is that you go to the hearing on this application. I would just say, only because I have knowledge in this area, there is the federal legislation for the Freedom of Religious Act. There are certain case law that does cover that as far as what a city, or what a town, or a board can impose on a religious institution when they want to expand. So it's complicated.
I'm sure.
I would, you know, strongly suggest that this is, this is not a, this is a board issue, and we understand your concerns, and we would really, you know, push you to that board.
I will attend the meeting, and as I said, I wanted you, all of you, to be aware of what's going on.
Is it, have you been notified of the hearing date?
It was, the hearing date was last month, but then they adjourned it.
Was it the zoning board or the planning board?
The zoning board.
Okay, the zoning board. Let me just, for the public's sake, is that the zoning board is a quasi judicial board, which the only authority that this council has is the appointment of the members. They have to look at each application in the context in, in the context of the municipal land use law and case law. This council cannot physically get involved in any of those decisions by law. They can't interfere. It is the members of that board that are gonna hear the testimony of the applicant and of, of the public and any professionals that the public hires. They will also hear the professionals of the board and then they will render a decision.
Okay, okay, that's fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
That said, if anybody's parking illegal, or parked, especially parking in a fire hydrant, they need to be ticketed. Alright? Has nothing to do, that has nothing to do with zoning, that has to do with-
That's correct.
Enforcement of the law. Thank you.
My name's Richard Servo, I'm on Spring Valley Ave. Maybe the city could find somebody with some interpersonal skills to go talk to our Muslim brothers, okay? Maybe that's a better suggestion, okay? Let me start by saying, I wanna go back to last meeting when Ms. Greenman, Councilwoman Greenman, ended by saying, why do we need a sports dome when we're cutting the library? Now you bounced back and, and gave the library a few bucks back, so you save face on that. So, but why do we need a sports dome for millions and millions of dollars when things are so tight? So, that's one thing. Also, Mr. Mayor last week mentioned to Mr. Coley that he didn't think we'd ever see lower taxes in Hackensack. Now wow. Now homeowners really want to hear that and they will hear it, okay? We won't let you forget that, okay? Also, a few other things. The, the presentation tonight was just, you know, it was plain facts on a screen. I, I guess it was a good job, I don't see the, the reason for all the praise, I really don't. It's just, it's numbers, it's, it's plain, simple numbers. Also, on those numbers, I wanted to ask either one of you, could we get a total on the list of of development projects you have going? And what the total is that they scored on tax breaks? Could we get that figure? So, cause it was quite a list of, of development projects and I'm wondering what they walked away with in tax breaks. The homeowners would like to hear about that too, okay? Also, this is not a big city, Mr. Tros. You're running it like a big city. Cut back, it's a small city. Now during the day, lots of people, you know, traverse through here. And, and, I don't know, slap them with a, a decal to come through Hackensack during the day. You know, maybe you can raise some money doing that. Because this is a small city, you're, you're running it like it's, you know, it's New York City and so where does the spending go from here? That's it, I, I saw some printouts on police and fire, which I, I just wanted to remind everyone, everyone, that our police and fire are the highest paid police and fire departments in the country. Isn't, isn't that amazing? I mean, I know this density of, of population here, but we haven't had any population growth in Hackensack for, for a long, 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 long time. None, okay? So, police and fire are well paid, so are all employees in Hackensack. So to hold the line on contracts this year makes sense. You know, at, at one time when salaries were low, I guess it's fine to negotiate and you get your increase, great. Absolutely, we agree with that. But now that salaries are way up top, why not hold the line on those for a while? And the last thing is, is I, I don't know how long you're gonna hide behind this tax appeal thing, but we've heard it a million times now. Tax appeals, tax appeals, tax appeals. Now, I mean, we understand that it was a problem, but, I mean, you can't keep using it. I mean, you're gonna use it two more years?
Gonna use it till it's paid off.
Okay, well, it's just, it's just tiring hearing it as if, you know, if anything goes wrong, well, it was the tax appeals. And, and it just doesn't-
I'm sorry the facts bore you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's facts.
Okay, facts do bore me, okay?
I realize that.
Because we're not sure, we're not sure if they're correct facts, you know?
They're 100% correct.
Okay, so that's it. Thanks for allowing me my time and thanks you very much, thanks.
You're welcome. Next please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Pierre Guillaud, Standish Avenue is where I reside. I put before the council a suggestion about the snow and also about the cars parked not being ticketed, not being removed or buried with snow, so the guy will know about it. It was supposed to be, the city manager was supposed to get back to me.
Now did the signs go up?
The signs, I didn't even go over the hill today to check before I came to the council meeting. But I, I know my no parking on the downside of this, of the, of the hill, but on the other side, I wasn't sure where they, where they placed no parking when there's no times, when the weather's prevailed.
I, I was, I, I was told that the signs were placed, I will, if they haven't, let me know and I will, I will verify that.
Also, the way they, uh, the other day, like I said, the cars, the snow is on the ground, in the street, and cars are parked. Over the whole weekend. And the snow is still there, it's still classified snow. Seven days a week. Should be cleared curb to curb. Not being done, the snow was still there.
I, I can't disagree with you.
Number two, we were talking, because the reason why I speak this way, my mirrors were smacked even though cars were parked because of the snow. I kept the driver's side mirrors, we bumped. I think it should be either, either parking all the way from Polyfly to Summit, or not parking. It's gotta be one or the other on the same side, can't have two sets of rules.
We, we are looking at that, but that, that would require an ordinance change and, and that, as you can see, moves slow.
That's government.
Unfortunately, you are correct.
Also about the budget, I have one suggestion. Since Hackensack has a lot of tax-free property. And if you look all around in the county with 70 towns, I don't think any town of the county has as much property tax-free. So we can get some revenue from those tax-free properties. Since you're worried about money, it's a big item, taxpayers are paying their share. But this tax-free property, county, state, hospitals, whatever, let's get with the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next please.
Salvo, same address. Basically, the last three people are talking about the same thing and it's enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. The signs went up, yes, because we complained and they weren't existing, they went up, but what's the sense of putting them up when nobody's enforcing them? The one in particular I asked for was on 49 Lowdy Street, a question from the, from the church, it went up.
49 what?
Lowdy Street, it went up, but, because you can't ticket somebody unless the sign is there, so there were some signs missing, as was on Standish. The signs went up, but again, it wasn't enforced, it's all about enforcement and we're not. Getting back to the mosque, there's, there's two things in question. What these people are concerned that live there and have to go through, through hell every, every Friday, is that it's not being enforced either. They park in front of the fire hydrant, they park on corners, they park in driveways. They're being good because they know they have an application, by the way, it's in front of the zoning board, it's a conditional use. And when I went to look at it, the contract, the architect had put parking spaces on the fire zone. He actually put six spaces on the fire zone for people to park, which is a yellow curb and it's not acceptable and it's also our street. So even if it wasn't a fire zone, it still belongs to the city of Hackensack, it's our street. So what they're going through now, and they do call the police department, nobody comes to enforce it. Even if they're there for an hour, you're talking about a lot, a lot of people praying in a building and have nothing against, you know, them, it's just, it's not the right building. And they don't have parking. And if they're blocking the fire zone, that's even worse, because god forbid there's a fire, how is that fire truck going to get there to put that fire out with, with all these people praying? It's, it's really an accident waiting to happen. You know, I have nothing against them, it's just that they do not have the parking for this facility. And 22 parking spaces are not gonna hack it, for this building. They need triple that. Everybody comes to pray at, at that hour and they just don't have it. So for this application, even to go in front of the zoning board, it doesn't make sense, because they wanna increase their, their prayer capacity and they can't because they don't have the parking spaces. Plus the fact they have to show that they have a lease from, from the church for at least 50 years, because the whole application is pending on that lease from, from the church. And if they don't come up with that, it can't happen. So, you know, like I said, we have nothing against, against them, it's just the idea that the neighborhood cannot accommodate them. Again, another parking issue, I don't know if you noticed, if you go out in the morning, every elementary school has a problem and it's all about parking. These mothers, they, they park in driveways, they turn in driveways, they literally drive past and throw the kids out of the car. And it's, it's a parking issue too, they, they're blocking everything they should. The one by, by, by the early elementary thing, it says no parking this side, it's a fire zone. God forbid a fire truck has to get through, it cannot get through. They're supposed to put the kids out on the other side. They should be ticketed, the sign says, no parking this side. They park the car and they have to walk the child in, because they're little kids, they can't just dump them off, it's not like the other elementary. And they're all illegal. And again, traffic does not, it's enforcement, the word is enforcement. And we're not doing it. I commend you on the budget, very transparent, as far as it is numbers and that's what a budget is, it's numbers. And you're telling where the money is going, how it's going. And yes, we will have a burden on these tax appeals, because the last administration failed to recognize it. They said, we're not paying it and the burden is ours and you took it on and, you know, I commend you. So you're gonna be hearing it until, you know, this would be perfect, we would, we would probably lower our taxes if it wasn't for these appeals, but we have to pay them. And the infrastructure too, everybody's ignored the infrastructure for hundreds of years and we just can't, we just can't ignore it any longer. I wanna commend Lenny, because Lenny went to the county freehold meeting last month, whatever, and he told him that the property on the one all the way up north Hackensack, that was where the Burton County police people were, that they should give it to the city of Hackensack, because all the years that it was off the tax hold and they haven't paid a penny on it, they should turn it over to us and we should sell it and make the money. Because we, we're really getting raped by the county, we're, we're the, we're the county seat and they, they have too many, too many non-ratable properties with us. They laughed when he told them that, but I thought, I thought it was a good suggestion. Or, or get some money back for, we are a big city, we're a big city all day long, because we're responsible for the thousands of people that come here to go to the hospital, to use the services. And we are responsible for when they're here, so our police department, our fire department has to do all the calls, it's not just for the citizens of Hackensack. And I resent that, because if one of our people need them, we're, we're paying babysitter to, to the facilities that we're, we're coasting, so to speak. So, we are a big city and, you know, at night we're not, but during the day we are and we are responsible and that's part of our budget. That's why we have a big police department, that's why we have a big fire department and it is what it is. We can't save money with that 911 call, I hope it's looked into, because if we take it back, our dispatch is-
Ms. Salvo, your five minutes is up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, have a nice evening. Next please.
Hi Mayor and Council, this is Paul in Calcaterra. I'm from the first ward. I, I have a question regarding demolition on Main Street. It looks like they started and then all of a sudden they stopped. I, I know that, you know, the sun, the snow has been a problem with things, anybody know why?
Go ahead David. Part of the issue is they are demoing it and there's dust control that has to occur. And with the freezing temperatures, you can't use the water, otherwise it's going to make the sidewalks, the streets unsafe. So when, when we're assured of, of non-freezing temperatures, they will, they will continue to-
Alright, and, and now that, that piece of property on Kansas Street or East Kansas Street and Hudson Street, they've just put up some gates there, or fencing. You know, where the Basano brothers used to be, East, East Kansas Street and Hudson Street? Right on the corner there? They're abandoned buildings and they've got, I was wondering what was happening with those.
East Kansas and?
Yeah, and Hudson. Yeah. I don't know what, they just recently put up cyclone fences there and I was wondering what was going on there.
I'll find it, I will find it.
Where they used to be the body shop?
Body shop may have been in the back.
Right.
Maybe in the back.
The whole block, the whole corner.
Yeah, that whole corner there.
East Kansas and Hudson?
Yeah, and then, and then, does anybody know what they're gonna do there?
I haven't seen anything in planning.
Yeah, once it's knocked down, does anybody know?
They might have just put it, they might have just put in for a demolition permit, because they can do that. Maybe they don't want it to pay taxes on the structure.
Okay.
A lot of reasons.
Alright. Okay. The other thing that I wanna ask you about is one block east, no west of that Hudson Street and, and on, on Kansas Street, there's a, there's a house, I think it's a, it's a home for the disabled. Recently, I, I put a call into Mr. Tros' office to let them know, there was 18 garbage bags sitting on the, the lawn there or on the curb. And they switched me to the DPW and they, they took away 15 of them. Now I'm saying, well, I'm glad, because they were there for a while. Does, does the recycling have to be put in a container for them to pick it up? Or does it, if they put it in a bag and they leave it there, which there are at least three, three or four bags, giant garbage bags?
Is it recycling or is, or is it trash?
I don't know, I, it looks like there's a lot of plastic coming out of the bags. So I'm thinking that the DPW did not take it because they think it's recycling.
I will, I will have to look into that.
Recycling is not supposed to go in a plastic bag.
No.
Okay, so, so officially it should go into a container, so the recycling people or people can see that, so recycle has to-
There's a recycling pickup and then a solid waste pickup.
Yeah, okay.
Supposed to separate-
Well, I have a feeling that they're putting these recycling products in the bags and they're leaving it.
Recycling, in fact.
And not recycling, I mean, I think, I think it's, you know, like I said, a home for the disabled, but still they have to abide by the rules too, am I correct?
I will look into that.
Okay.
I, I would say as a general rule, since I've worked for a number of municipalities, the city of Hackensack, based on my observations, needs to recycle more.
Yes, yes. If you need a helper, I'm, I'm, I'm a strong advocate of that.
We need to, because when we recycle more, our tonnage goes up and that means we get
Get more money.
More money back from the state.
Yes, well if you need help then no. Okay, cause I think it's very important. And the last thing that I wanted to say is, you know, one of the things I think that would be great for the city to get money from is those SOBs who fly above us and make that noise. They opened up that airport to the corporate world, okay, and making all kinds of noise. Why don't we find them? People would probably say it might be a federal, why don't we find them? $10,000 every time they make a lot of noise and we could really cash in on that. Think about all the, all about, all the money that would come in from these corporate people who, they wanna use our airspace and you wanna make noise? Well, you gotta pay for it, we live here!
They monitor it.
We live here, but it's not enough. It's not enough. They get away with it. Think about that, if we had maybe 10 or 15 jets a week making noise, that's $150,000, just saying, $10,000 one, would, would that help?
Sure.
I'll leave that with a smile. Thank you very much.
Thank you sir. Next please.
Regina De Pasco, Parker Avenue. The tax appeals, it, it's, it's real numbers, real facts, not a dog and pony show. It's a can that's been kicked down the road and you guys picked up that can and you're handling it and, and you have to do it. It's tough, nobody appreciates it, but
That's for sure.
It's tough and it's gotta be done. I realized from the presentation, I, I believe our DPW is our most underrated department. They had three pages in here and the things that they do, you only notice if they don't do it. Okay? So, I, I appreciate the DPW. As far as the fire department, you couldn't pay me enough to do their job. They're, they're the first responders for car accidents. Somebody jumped off the, the parking garage, who's there, the fire department? Everybody else is running out, they're running in. You can't, I, I, they're very, very important and they're our guys and they care about us and they know us. They know us. So, I just had to put my, you know, I love the police department too, but right now I'm having an issue with that, but I, I love the police department, DPW and fire department, they deserve all, all that they get. As far as everybody with this parking, with the snow, hopefully no more snow, but now we've got nine months to figure it out for next year, okay? And we really do have to figure this out, it has to be handled, it was horrible this year. I sent most of you an email, I will not send Ms. Greenman an email for obvious reasons, so if she's out of the loop on this, that's her own doing. But most of you also know that I got an email back. And the email that I sent originally said, our parking enforcement is a joke. And then the email I got back, I wish it was a joke, but from traffic, that unfortunately manpower constraints prevent us from enforcing every street every day. It's not fair that if only half the cars get tickets. We do not enforce areas where we know DPW has no intention of either utilizing street cleaning machine or plowing. We currently don't have a reliable method to notify all residents. They're called the signs, they say no parking, it's the law. It, it, there are signage there. Now on Beach Street, Dave, you, you know, Beach is horrible. Go down there every day, there are buses going, there are cars going, there's a lot of traffic on Beach Street at 8 o'clock in the morning, okay? On the, what is, South Side? Those cars never moved. That is a no parking when snow covered. Always, always, how much ice is there, about this much? Where cars are parked on top of it right now. Never, ever, ever got enforced by the school on a hill. Really? And the reason for not enforcing? Not enough people? Or can't tell people? Or it's not fair? This is from, this is an email from somebody in traffic. Somebody who should know better than to send this kind of email that it's not fair to enforce the law. There is no enforcement. There is no enforcement. And it, one of the best things in this, and I have to, I have to put this out there, because it is what the answer I got. And these are the answers that people get. And it's crazy that you get this kind of answer. That you could call up and find out if they're actively enforcing the parking? They should always be enforcing the parking. There, and, and I didn't know, you could call up. Can I call up on Mondays and Thursdays and say, hey, do I have to move my car today? That, that shouldn't be, that shouldn't be. This has to be handled. And Mr. Tros, yes, you can talk to the director. And as a city manager, the director's a department head who falls under you? So, that my thing, I, I don't, I don't know. You can talk to the director. If the director's employees are not doing what they're supposed to do, action has to be taken, the entire city. We all live in different parts of the city. We don't all live in the same area. It's the entire city has this issue. And the answer that I seem to have got, well, we can't do everybody and it's not fair to only do half, so we're not enforcing the parking? No parking when it's, the snow covered? No parking during certain hours? Yeah, that was the other complaint I had, there was, it happened to be snowing and no parking for street cleaning on Thursday and there was a car parked there? Well, the answer I got, well, when we know DPW is not going to plow or use a street sweeper, we don't enforce it? So they thought my street wasn't getting plowed on Thursday? Is that why that car was allowed to be there all day? It's never enforced, it is not enforced. And the very first thing I said in that email is enforcement is a joke, but it's not funny.
Thank you, Mr. Pasco, thank you.
Did I use my five minutes?
Yes.
Wow!
Next please.
Mr. Coley, Prospect Ave. This year, in almost 40 years, it's been a long time since I've seen that I've seen the Hackensack Police Department come down the street with their cars and the bull horns saying, it's snowing, please remove your cars. And you guys did come and remove the cars. I also applied for a parking permit so I can park in the Atlantic Street parking garage, because you guys said- 'cause you guys said so. They took it away. They said I wasn't entitled to it because I didn't live in the right house, building. So, now I'm back too. Oh, they told me to move my car. I guess I can't move it. I used it the night before the storm, take my car, put it in that spot, in the parking garage where there was plenty of spots. My son put his car in my spot and I eliminated the excess cars on the street. But I got tickets for using that parking garage and they told me I got the parking permit illegally. Okay, so I gave it back. Now, that building on, that's being used as a mosque. All the years I was here, that was a meeting hall use only, never a mosque. They tried to do it with the Old Knights of Columbus and the city held them to what they, what the building for was never a mosque. So, all that parking problem that you have down there, I don't know how it's happening because it was never a mosque. Now, my main subject, of course, is the wonderful soccer dome. Now, this was told to me at the last meeting that this is for the children and the emphasis was children of Hackensack, not the adult, out-of-town leagues. Johnson Park on its own has no parking and you're looking to use the FDU parking lot? Who told the police years ago that used to have the police range down there? Get your cars out of our lot and they fenced, and they chained it off. So, maybe that's not the ideal place to put a soccer dome. And who will pay for the police security for this soccer dome? You have eight officers at any given time at any Hackensack football game and only half of the schedule's played whole. Now, you're gonna have out-of-town people using another, uh, uh, somebody else's parking lot and I'm assuming we're gonna have to supply security, insurance and liability for any damage done to somebody else's property, as well as any trouble from these out-of-towners that come into our town to have sports. Of course, not the Hackensack children. And the last thing I had on there is, how, how many other towns do have this particular use? I know Teaneck has the armory, okay? Armory built by the federal government, turned over to the, to the city of Teaneck. We are building something brand spanking new. And listening to everything you told me about the budget tonight, can we not step back? Give this town a breather of a couple of years? You still don't know what the school board's gonna raise that tax rate or the library. Now, we pay for the school board and I never, to this day, don't understand it. How we can dictate to the, to the school board, say, "You want ten million for your budget, we can, as the city, can only pay you nine million." I think they should have to be able to adapt to the regular, the cost of the entire city budget and not their own. I think it's wrong, it always was wrong. Now, years ago, the city of Hackensack was offered the right to join all the other towns that have a county facility located in them so they can get their taxes lowered. Of course, Hackensack said, "No, we don't want to join." Paramus gets a, gets back money for all those parks they have. And the last mayor, Cesar, I believe, had an agreement with the county that when they give up the DPW and the county police department, that built property was gonna be turned over to us and they were gonna put an apartment building up to bring ratables. Now, you tell me that deal's not here no more. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Nix. When anybody goes in front of the, uh, planning board or the zoning board, there should summon from the building department to look at the building. Somebody, that mosque is gonna go in front of, uh, the planning board or the zoning board? Somebody oughta go check that building out, 'cause I was there today and I think they got a lot of violations. So, they gotta go. And you can make somebody go, I guarantee you. As far as parking tickets go, I got a parking ticket waiting for a parking space in front of the post office across the street from the police department. Some girl was parked in a crosswalk. She comes out, so two cops pull across the street to the police department. She goes yelling and screaming across. I wouldn't let her out. I told her she was in a parking. The two cops, a guy and a girl, come over and give him, you know, I knew he was gonna pull some kinda crap. It was that time, the, uh, I have a lot of friends at the police department. And the girl watched me. He went into the police station and he had to search for some kinda violation. So, he comes back with a violation of blocking traffic on State Street, which is three ladies. I wasn't blocking traffic, but he made me pull up to the stupid girl who must have knew some other stupid cop or something. So, I, uh, the stupid girl that was in a rush, that was parked illegally, couldn't get out, but the stupid cop didn't see that. Um, I gotta call him stupid because if he, if he's the cop and he don't see that, I, I be a stupid cop.
Lenny, no. No derogatory language, please.
No. Well, make, be a compliment for him or something, because I would, I would let that guy go.
I don't feel it's a compliment, I feel it's disrespectful, please.
And I don't need him standing next to me.
Lenny, just try to be respectful.
I don't need this standing next to me. I don't want my five minutes wasted on that.
Officer, give him his five minutes, please, just take a...
I don't need him next to me.
Lenny.
Because he's in charge of the...
Lenny.
Not you. He's in charge of the... Don't sound...
Mr. Nix. Mr. Nix.
No, I'm ahead with the cops.
I know he's not.
He knows what he's supposed to do.
Mr. Nix.
I asked for two, I asked for two cops tonight, because one cop can't do it by himself. And this proves it. We need two cops here at night, cause the, two, one cop can't do it.
Please, let's get back to business.
I'm saying, I'm the police department.
We know that, now please, let's get back to business.
Absolutely, totally out of control police department.
You tell us that every two weeks, please, let's get back to...
No, I've had it. I've been going on seventy years, I'm gonna be in ninety years, I ain't putting up no more. They just should be saving the streets, but I'm not gonna come in night after night for the same thing and from her, from her and from her, for the same thing night after night. They can't have a traffic department, they can't do nothing. I don't know who we're chasing. We're gonna do this how many more nights? The same thing. Parking. The building department is inadequate. That building is shut down because they never got the permits for as fast as the other buildings. I don't wanna come here and run the town. I ain't making the kind of money he's making. There's numerous reasons why that's shut down and when those reasons are gone, I'll flip another reason on them. I've had it with everybody, if I gotta sue everybody to town, I'll sue, do I run out of money? Okay? But I'm not gonna blow up with this crap or anybody else's crap. The dome is a stupid idea that should go to the school board. The kids, these teachers are getting away with murder up there and I know half of them shouldn't even be teachers, okay? Let them take care of their kids, let them be charged in the school board, not the city of Hackensack. If they wanna play soccer, let them play like I play. You can play day and night, night after field, and play outside. What do you watch, a bunch of fairies out there playing soccer?
Please.
I don't know what this country's coming to.
Lenny, one more, one more derogatory comment, I'm gonna have to sort it out. No more derogat-, put your headphones on.
What derogatory? The teachers?
No.
What's your, I, I speak the truth. You wanna call it derogatory, call it derogatory. I speak the truth. Watch, watch the meetings on TV. What's going on in town?
Clark, how much time left?
You guys are getting away with murder, the council and everybody that works for the city of Hackensack. The money they make is astronomical. I worked all my life, you know what I gotta go for it?
The money, the money who, who, what makes?
Nah, I take it. Every night the same thing. And nothing gets done.
Nothing, okay. Thank you, Mr. Nix.
Sick and tired of it. Now, cool down, you cool down. How many more nights you gotta come and talk about traffic?
Anybody else, please?
A hundred?
Did that excite you enough, Mr. Servo, you feel better now? Thank you. Anybody else, please? Seeing none, motion to close to the public.
Shoot me.
Second.
Roll call.
You can do, right? Shoot him.
They depend, they depend.
Oh, mind your own business, okay? Leave me alone. Mind your own business. Mind your own business.
Kathy, it's be unruly. He's, he's disrupting the meeting. He either stops or he gets taken out. That's the law. If anybody acted like that in your place of business, you'd have them thrown out. This is a place of business, we're conducting business, they have to act appropriately, sorry. Motion to close, where were we?
Your deputy mayor, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Pataglia?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Hi.
Councilmember Sims?
Hi.
Councilmember Greenman?
Hi.
Mayor LaBrusso?
Hi.
Okay. Mr. Pataglia?
First of all, thank you again to Davy and Jean and the financial committee for the way you guys prepared the budget. Thank you again. And related to the tax appeal, that's the facts, you know? It's thirty million dollars that from two thousand and four, two thousand and five, the city never really honored the money that we owe to all these buildings. And related to the multi-use facility, because it's not only for soccer, you can do over there, you can practice baseball, you can practice, you can have batting cages, you can use for that, you can do so many things, field hockey, you can practice football. And I always looking for the avenues to try to do that for years. And the previous administration really wasted the opportunity to gather, play for free. John and Kathy, you know, introduced this to a, a friend that was willing to give the three million dollar to the city to build the multi-use facility. We got meetings with the city manager, we got meeting with a, with a lawyer from the city, Mr. Cesar, and they was postponed and postponed. And finally, this guy got met and he built his own facility in Castleton, Washington Avenue. And Kathy and John, they visited the place, okay? Now, I feel like the kids from the city, they deserve a place where they can play. Pasey has it and for the information, you got places like in Garfield, Lincoln Park, Clifton, Montclair, Wayne, uh, Walworth, Teaneck, you know? So, this is a place that's gonna be used for the kids, not for the adults. Now, the question is, how you gonna maintain the facility? The kids can play up to eight o'clock from the day they got off, they can play from seven o'clock in the morning right to eight o'clock. And in the regular days, they have to go to sleep early. So, by eight o'clock, they should be walk out of the facility and then you can rent to academies, to adults or whatever. The other places, they are charging a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars for one field. We're gonna have four fields. So, with the rentals and the indoor tournaments where the kids from Hackensack are gonna play for free, you can raise a lot of money, so the, the place gonna sustain by itself. Now, you talk about security. Every of these places got a manager, a city manager, a person that's gonna keep the place clean. If you go to Teaneck, Walworth, one of these places, they don't have police officers inside. But in case a father, a parent or maybe somebody go out of line, they make a phone call and the police be there in a couple of minutes. So, what is the reason we're gonna pay a police officer? Now, these particular places, they help the coaches to work with the kids, not only for the sport. We are trying to build good citizens, good kids. Out of the kids that used to be with me, they got a scholarship to go to college, one kid played for, for the national team. Now, they are forty-two-year-olds, they are thirty-five-year-olds. They all good kids, good citizens. So, before we say anything, go and do your homework and look at these places. I go to Wayne and I see the basketball games, right? And the kids from Hackensack, they way behave, a lot of discipline, they listen to the coaches, they're winning their games. But here in Hackensack, what do we have? Pasey already, about a month ago, they opened their own indoor place. Pasey! Shut up, Lenny.
Okay? Leo and Lenny.
Okay? So...
Stop, Lenny.
The kids, they need a place where they can be. At night, we don't have no places to go and we have to go and rent field for two fifty, three hundred bucks an hour, we don't have that kinda money. Sunday, I was going to play here in the Eminem Building, I saw maybe fifty kids playing in the high school with the snow on the field. They can get hurt, they can break a leg or whatever. So, I don't think so, our kids deserve a field like that. So, we should be, build facility where the kid, the kid can be. And that's all, it's not for me, it's for the kids, okay? Thank you.
Ms. Canestrino?
Yeah, okay, uh, looking over the agenda tonight in the docket, just a couple of things. Um, I see our Prospect Ave, some of our folks from Prospect Ave have already left, but they'd be happy if they looked on this, if you took a good look at our paving ordinance. I mean, one of the things we've been talking about for year after year after year is finally getting the paving done on Prospect Ave. And I don't know how many of you read the details of that resolution, uh, introduction of that ordinance, excuse me, but it has to do with paving of a number of streets and one of them specifically Prospect Ave. So, if you're watching on TV, Prospect Ave residents, this is a, a good reason for celebration. Second thing of concern to me, you know, is the dissolution of our agreement with Maywood for, um, the garbage pickup. I have very mixed feelings about this. Uh, shared services is a key way to help us financially. I mean, whether we provide the service like we did with Maywood and that brings revenue to the city, or whether we give up a service like we did with social services for a lesser or in this case, a zero cost to the city. Both of these things help us maintain our services at a reasonable rate for our residents. But after a thorough review of what was happening with the Maywood garbage and what it was actually costing us, we were not seeing any revenue increase from the Maywood garbage. So, we had to move forward and dissolve that. You know, I wish it was better news, but facts are what they are and we can't share that burden or share that cost with our fellow town. If we were making money, it would be a great idea and we still have to continue to explore other means of shared services. St. Patrick's Day is coming and the Recreation Department will be having their annual St. Patrick's Day senior luncheon, I believe, on St. Patrick's Day. So, and senior citizens come on out, you know, it's lunchtime, they do a great job down there with their senior citizen lunch, so I hope to see many of you there. Uh, looking over some of the comments quickly from tonight, yes, there was a common theme and that common theme had to do with parking enforcement. I mean, we've heard it from people throughout the town and we've heard it for a variety of different reasons and we've even heard some silly kind of excuses about it. Uh, I think that is something, you know, Mr. City Manager, that we have to look into. I mean, we're hearing this repeatedly from our residents. We have to get to an understanding and a plan of how we're gonna correct this problem. Um, as far as the folks that came to speak about the mosque and the parking there, absolutely. If there's illegal parking going on down there, those cars need to be ticketed. We cannot and, and should not be looking the other way, that has to be handled. Um, as far as the change in use of that building, I think the city manager explained to the residents very well, this goes before the zoning board and we, as city council, cannot be involved or cannot interfere in that process. Um, but you, as the public, just as you came here tonight, we encourage you to go to those meetings and relay that information to our zoning board and, uh, hopefully they'll make good decisions as they always have had. Mr. Servo, there's lots of people that don't like numbers, there's lots of people that are afraid of numbers, but to say that there's no reason for praise and that this budget is plain and simple, nothing could be further from the truth. To do a budget, to sit down and accomplish a task such as, as this, is the furthest thing from plain and simple that I can possibly convey to you. And it's very distressing to hear you say such a thing. And it's very distressing to hear you say such a thing. Excuse me, it's my turn to speak. I didn't interrupt you. Excuse me, Mr. Servo, it's my turn to speak. Tired of hearing about the tax appeals. We're all tired about having to pay the tax appeals and adjust our budgets, for it's absolutely we are. But it's a fact. This is a fact, and we're presenting the facts to you, because we're being open and we're being transparent. And we're explaining to you what the issues here are in the city and how we're handling them to your best interest. So yes, you are gonna continue to hear about them, because it's a serious problem, but we're handling it. We have a solution. We're not sweeping it under the rug. We're not kicking the can down the road. We're handling it. Uh, anyone else? I think Lenny answered the question, I mean, excuse me, not Lenny, Leo answered the questions about the multi-use sports dome. So I think that's pretty much it. If I missed anyone, anyone has any other questions, please, I'll be here afterwards. All of us will come up and, and ask your questions then, and we'll be hope, happy to answer them. Everyone have a good evening and a safe ride home, and hopefully the warm weather's on its way.
David?
As the deputy mayor said, with the St. Patrick's Day luncheon, you do need a ticket to get in. So if you don't have a ticket, I would call the rec center tomorrow. They have allocated two hundred slots, and they were going fast. Second, I wanna talk about the splash park. I am overwhelmed that we're putting out a second splash park in Carver Park. Hopefully, it'll be together by mid-July, so the kids can get some water. Third, we talked about the Summer Series concert. Hopefully, it's Atlantic Street Park Theater will be done by the end of May, and we can have a couple of concerts in the, in the park. Regina, Kathy Savo, we've heard some of your complaints, and we will address them. Jim and Dave, once again, thanks for the budget. You guys did a great job.
Rose?
Okay. Uh, I wanna belabor the same thing again and again. Kudos to you two and to everyone involved, to your support staff, the heads of the department. You did a good job. I wanted to bring to your attention that this month, or maybe it was last month, that we are bringing up the cause of human trafficking. And I attended a, an event, a publishing event. Um, we were all invited, but it so turned out I was the only one attending it. And this is a book called Can You Hear Us? It's a book that contains oral narrations of twelve victims who were forced to serve Japanese soldiers as comfort women, sex slaves, basically, and their testimony. The estimates vary, but it, um, at its highest, it looks like it's almost half a million women uh, that served in that capacity, unfortunately. Um, and that includes China, people, uh, this is Imperial Japan, by the way, uh, that was colonizing all of those, all of these countries. So Japan, uh, Kalna, excuse me, Kalna is China, uh, Korea, um, Burma, Thailand, Vietnam, Malaysia, Indonesia, and a bunch of other colonies that belong to the old East Indies, Dutch Indies. So, um, we got three copies of this book, and I'm going to bring it to the library. And if we need more, uh, we'll get more books, and so you can, uh, borrow it and look, read about it, and, um, try to stand up for, um, stand up against human trafficking and call attention to this, um, terrible problem that still is ongoing. I want to thank everyone for coming and, uh, good discussion. You know, let's hope more of the same. I appreciate everybody staying, stating their opinion. And, uh, have a good night. Let's hope no more snow, no more problems with parking. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Prospect. Mrs. Canestrino alluded to the fact that we're finally paving Prospect. Prospect is the most traveled, um, street in Hackensack based on the fact that the amount of people living on it. More people live on that street than any street in the county. And, uh, because of that and the fact that it's an emergency route, and ambulances and fire trucks are up and cop cars are up all day long, it takes a beating, and, uh, it's quite evident. Last year, it really took a big beating. We had more potholes than we did pavement, I think. And, uh, it looks like it's gonna be the same. So I'm glad that we're able to accomplish getting that paved. That's an accomplishment. I, I thank everybody for that. Uh, the splash park, I'm excited to put that in Carver Park. I think it's great for the kids. Well deserved, and I, I hope it's up by July so they can enjoy it in the, in the hot weather. Maywood. Um, I don't even know if we were, you know, if we were breaking even, I'd, even, I'd probably be happy. The fact is, you know, I feel the same way. I have mixed, mixed emotions. The state really, that's one of the best practices that the state recommends, is having best practices, having shared services with other municipalities. We tried it. It didn't work out. There's a certain amount of liability there also. The Maywood pickup is done differently than ours. Our DPW has to literally pick the cans up and dump them in the old-fashioned way instead of having the truck do the lifting. And, uh, you know, it, it could have been an issue. Parking at the mosque, we need to enforce it, all right? If there's, you know, I don't care if it's only an hour. We need to do something. There could be solutions here. Could these people meet in a general parking area somewhere else and bust down? There's gotta be some solution that they don't have, all these, you know, thirty, forty, fifty cars in, in an, in an area like that. I mean, it's gotta be another way for them to get there. But in the meanwhile, if they're parking illegally, they should be ticketed. Mr. Servo, yeah, I know you didn't like the idea of the, of the, uh, the bubble. You know, I'm gonna bring up the library budget. We talked about that, two point eight million dollars, and I'm more than, we're more than happy to do that. We'd love to give them everything they want, but, uh, you know, we're giving them quite a bit more, which was noted when the budget was introduced, over nine hundred thousand dollars more a year. The entire rec department for the city of Hackensack, for our children and our seniors, is just over four hundred thousand dollars. For the entire city, for every child in this city. This city has let their recreation go for so long. I was in Fair Lawn last week at their rec center. It was embarrassing when you sit in that rec center and then walk into ours. You go into any of these, some of these towns are spectacular. Lowdy, uh, you know. It's, please, Lenny, it's my turn. Thanks. You had yours. Thank you. Does kids in this town deserve to have a facility, all right? They deserve to have a good facility. This bubble is a multi-use, uh, feature that will be able to be used by all different sports. And again, there's a good opportunity for nighttime, if these leagues are interested or academies or, or other schools to rent it, to, uh, to get some money back on it. And I gotta, I thought of the ice house before. Do we have a full-time cop at the ice house all the time? I realize it's private, but we can still mandate security. I mean, parents, irate parents are irate parents. Yeah, so I'm, I'm just saying, you know, there's, I've been involved in youth sports all my life. You're gonna have situations whenever there's competition with your children. It's gonna happen. But, uh, like Leo said, cops a few minutes away. Um, stabilizing taxes. You know what? I wish the day comes when you can say I was wrong about lowering taxes, but I'm a realist. Our job, knowing what we came in here with, is to stabilize the taxes in this town the best way we could, and we're being successful at it. To lower taxes is, in today's day and age, I, you know, I don't think I was that far, out of being, out of reality, saying that. I mean, it's, would be literally impossible to lower taxes without firing half the city. It's just impossible. I know, well, fire half the city, I, we could do it. I mean, absolutely. Tax breaks. At this point, on developers, Mr. Servo, only one developer has received a tax break so far, because the other developers haven't gotten that far into the process. There will be tax breaks, and you know what? Ninety-four State Street, which is the development I'm talking about that received a tax break, got a big tax break. But I still will point out that that property was blighted. It was paying seventy-six thousand dollars a year in taxes, all right? And now it will be a beautiful building and pay two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. So it's a two hundred thousand dollar a year increase even with the thirty-year pilot program. So, to me, that's a good deal, 'cause nothing else was going there, and nothing else was gonna go there for twenty years. It was gonna sit there paying at seventy-five thousand and probably go down because they'd appeal the taxes. Instead, you have a beautiful building, uh, which is gonna enhance the area and, and bring more radibles into this town. I don't know where you came up that we have the highest-paid fire department and police department in the country. I don't know that that's fact or not, uh, but I will look into it. I will tell you this, our, our fire, our police department is, when you look at what they've done on the graph tonight and our fire department, our fire department's a class one, one of only sixty in the entire country. And they work very hard, and so does our police department, but there's, I don't know that they're the highest paid. I would, I wanna check into that. To me, I can't, you know what? Snow and the parking enforcement stunk this year. No doubt about it. We gotta do a better job. It's gotta be fixed. It has to be fixed. We gotta get the cars off the street so we can plow the streets. Once the streets are plowed, the cars can go back. We have to come up with a plan. Mr. Pasco, I, I, you know, I saw your emails, I saw the exchange, and I couldn't agree with you more. I, I don't feel that that was appropriate, uh, for someone from traffic to react to you like that. And, uh, I'm not gonna apologize for it, but I don't think it was, is right. I see Pierre is still here. Teterboro, you wanna announce the news that's coming up about the planes coming over? Would you like me to?
Oh, okay.
July?
Uh, I figure they're saying roughly, uh, around July, they would be traveling down Route seventeen, and then they're gonna hook, uh, right around Route eighty and go in pattern nineteen and twenty-six, but.
Well, I can't hear you. I can't hear.
I'll, I'll repeat it. I'll repeat it. Go ahead.
What they're proposing for the traffic to go into Teterboro Airport is travel down Route seventeen and start coming down by Marwak, come down Route seventeen, hook right by where Uday is to go into the airport. But here's the problem. We're gonna have, we're still gonna get the same amount of noise. And the high rises, they're gonna practically eat the planes.
Yeah, but I thought they were staying away from the high rises and the hospital.
But they're, they're hooking, they're moving from where they're flying over the hospital now and going right away from the hospital.
Right.
We try to keep them away from the hospital.
Towards seventeen more?
Wants to hear that noise in about nine.
Right.
Dr. Young was saying about the planes, once you get federal money in the airport, you never get rid of it. We put a bill in to stop them flying from eleven to seven AM. They don't wanna listen to it.
Right.
And we can't force them to do it, because it was grandfathered, and the rules that said before, we're gonna stay.
Right.
And of course, you got jets, no change. So eleven to seven, they're gonna just keep us woke. But only I'm hoping when they come down Route seventeen, Allen Dale, Frank and Alex is gonna get the noise now.
Exactly. The, the route is.
They don't want you to fly.
The route is gonna change. It's not gonna be coming in directly from the north, coming over, uh, kinda like from River Edge, coming over Borg's Woods, over towards the hills where you live, right over the hospital and all that. It's gonna come down from the north, uh, from the west more, I think, down, down seventeen, but, uh.
They're starting the descent around Marwak.
Right. So hopefully, that'll be a change in, in the noise. It may move a little bit, but, uh.
That's runway nineteen. They have another runway twenty-two, I think.
Correct. Z is a agreement. Uh, Mr. Colley brought that up. I'd like to look into that. If there was an agreement, and if there's anything in writing, let's dig that up.
Hackensack has first choice of any county building property that is given up by the county. Hackensack has the choice to date the property first.
Right, and Lenny said that at the, at the freehold meeting.
Well, we need it in writing. If it's there, we will definitely look into that. No doubt about it. Who else got attacked tonight? The teachers. Not the board of ed, but I, you know, I, I think our teachers do a great job in this town. Paul in Calcaterra, I wanted to thank you for bringing up those areas, uh, that are up for demo, 'cause I wasn't aware of it. I wanna make sure, you know, I'm glad that you brought it up. Uh, what else? I think that's about it. Oh, small city. You're right. As cities go, we are a small city until eight o'clock in the morning. And then at eight o'clock in the morning, we grow from forty-three thousand to close to a hundred and thirty thousand people every day, every day. Hundred and thirty thousand is not a small city. It's a medium-sized city. So, you know, I think Mr. Trose is doing a good job. We just don't take care of our citizens. We're responsible for everybody that comes into the city every day, walking, driving, bicycling, motorcycling, however they get here. We're responsible when they're within the city limits for what they're doing and what happens to them. So, uh, yeah, I like, I like the small-town feel, but we still have a city here. That's what I love about this town. Um, we have all the residential neighborhoods, and we have a downtown area. We're obviously in the middle of making the downtown a lot, lot more desirable, which will make some of the residential people wanna go visit downtown more and make people come from out of town, visit it more. It's a whole, you know, build it and they will come type, like the movie, and that's, that's what we're trying to do. I think that's it. I think I covered everything. I wanna thank everybody for coming. I think we're done with the snow. And, uh, pray for no more snow. Thanks, everybody. Get home safe. Thanks.
Need a motion?
Oh, a motion to close.
All is in favor?
Aye.